Thank you all. And our education. Both we bring your guidance as we make decisions for our county. We're thankful for those who have chosen Sir, as Sir has been will be. Having your titles transferred over tonight to new council members, we're very appreciative of them. And thank everybody for their support. Father always asks me for all your blessings on the entire, the entire council. And to always protect all of our first responders and those who protect us. Amen. All right, I believe you already indicated that the number one assignment for what we form our public promise. Do you have any one of this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to special presentations, proclamations and awards. Begin with our FY nineteen twenty five presentation. Good evening. Pleasure to be back soon as you all. We'll get to this early in the evening. I'll be glad to see any questions in here. Next slide please. Again, this year we should unmask the ball by the day, which is highly opinionated offer. The main amendment for this year is the issuance of the eligibility added to Southern Cross Street. There were some people who were very excited about that. Mainly there was a cap out in one of my mind, which mainly consisted of the added facility and super work. The the observation reports on clients with all departments, the auditor general, including financial condition laundry. The town's financial conditions are very good shape. And I heard admission to donations and it's kind of hard to see at the bottom of there, but we had a manager comment, which is a recommendation to improve internal controls regarding the usage of P O's. We found in our testing, one instance of P O's not being used properly, but I want to know that that was on a statistical sample, which means that it could indicate further issues with P O's. And I know that management is working to resolve that issue. There's a response to our comment at the end of these statements. Here you can look at the fund balance of the general fund. You can see the way I'm negotiating there on the right, which represents the money that came into the group. What was left actually after the two thousand construction out there. So you've got to get a general trend and idea of fund balance, fund of general fund balance over time. And here's kind of a look at it and you can see the line there, the expenditures up and down mainly throughout the years. And then the, the general fund operating basically on a modified cash basis. So we show proceeds at science sources, which function as revenue. That's all the slides I have. Any questions? Council, we have any questions for you? Rather be a single regulation that is kind of the same regulation that we typically have to decide. And so is that something that we can amend between here or is that just purely needing more? We'd have that more staff.
We would have that more staff and you're also going to want to invent all that anyway. So we're going to have that ding every single time. Well, I just tell us do have that. This year was an anomaly because of COVID. That's why we had the second day with the purchase orders. And that was through public works and getting the candy raised and removing some trees. So there's two purchase orders that were over the thousand that did follow the proper protocols and didn't get the proper signatures before they come to town council. And we now have a hopefully a new public works person coming on board tonight since that old work structure is on. So I'll say as being an issue in the future.
I just want to make sure that we track things and that, you know, we don't allow that little slip to become big slip. You guys have to be a great child. We appreciate all of them. I made sure that we know where every, every penny goes. Council, any further questions or comments? All right, seeing that, we will move on. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
I do make note of that. Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Debbie. Thanks staff. Thank you, directors. These audits go on for a couple of weeks. There's a lot of digging, a lot of filing, a lot of answering questions. So each and every year, we come out with a clean audit, which is very thorough and separate.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Where are we going to see?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon to our residents here today. So I get to be sent on our privileged day of actually introducing you to two of our officers. The first officer is our newest officer, Officer Mark Wilson. Mark, what are you going on? So Mark Wilson is our newest officer. We announced him just about two weeks ago in the Winter Police Department. Safety watch, this picture photographed on our, Mark actually come to the Winter Police Department after almost 20 years for the New York City Police Department. He graduated in, in New York City. He actually went to the military as well, out there, making a New York State National Guard up there. He served some time in the fire department, first volunteer at the time. So he's no stranger to service and volunteer work. And after doing 20 years, almost 20 years at the New York City Police Department, Ian's wife decided to come down to the state of great state of Florida. And we've been talking for probably about a year and a half, I think, about him coming to the Winter Police Department. So we are very honored and blessed to bring him aboard as our newest officer to the Winter Police Department. And today we get the opportunity to do this ceremony. I'll swear in officially if this were in because he's where I've got everything else. This is an opportunity to do that and take a vote. So Mark, I'm just standing right here. Raise your right hand and repeat that for me. I say your name. Someone I swear for firm that I have a support, protect and defend. Constitution of the United States, state of Florida and the ordinances of the town of Winter. That I am newly qualified to serve in this position as police officer. And I will well and faithfully, while partiality and prejudice, perform the duties of police officer for the town of Winter, which I'm about to enter. So help the God. Congrats. Welcome aboard.
Mark has been training with Officer Hebel, so he has been to Orange County Jail several times.
So good experience there. Sergeant McCall, can you please come on up? So Sergeant McCall, we were supposed to be hearing you just receive an award last time, if you remember, he was actually sick. Had a COVID exposure, but he's doing, he's doing well now. So he's going to get this award. He's actually getting two awards. The first one is a unit citation. If you remember last year, we promoted Sergeant McCall to the, to the rank of sergeant. He is a reserve police officer. So once again, for our residents, our reserve police officers function as a full police officer, but they volunteer their time and their service to town. It's just amazing what they did with the subtle service that they did this town. Sergeant McCall, he has an exceptional job. We promoted him to the rank of sergeant last year because of that outstanding job and supervision that he had done. I will tell you, he's getting two awards today. One is to give a citation. I'm going to read that. And the other one is the presidential volunteer award, which most of the reserves got. However, Sergeant McCall, he got the most hours. He volunteered six hundred and ninety-one hours to the town of Winter last year. That's just amazing. Congratulations. I would read our unit citation first. Unit citation is presented to the Winter Police Department's Reserve Unit under outstanding demonstration of teamwork and dedication to the town of Winter. Around 2020, the Reserve Unit assisted with various community events, specialty analysis and training. Despite the many challenges faced due to COVID, the Reserve Unit continued to support the uniform patrol with manpower, altogether the Reserve Unit volunteered a total of two thousand three hundred and sixty hours at a cost statement of nearly $64,000 for our town. Your commitment and diligence to duty as well as the safety of the residents of the town of Winter, I commend you with this great award. Congratulations. So along with a presidential award, you get the gold award for the pen. And I'm going to read off what we received from the icons. Congratulations on receiving the presidential volunteer service award. On behalf of this grateful nation, I thank you for your service to all Americans and those most needy. Through your dedicated service, you have ensured the continuation of America's unparalleled commitment to improving the lives of others. Over this year, you have served as a model for American spirit. Your many hours of service has strengthened the bonds of cooperation and trust that bring people together, while helping to address some of the greatest challenges of our time. One of our nation's greatest strengths remains the compassion of everyday citizens, who also give women greater themselves and their lives that benefit others. Each generation of hardworking and kind-hearted volunteers helps to write a new chapter of American greatness. And our nation is proud of your commitment and your honorable tradition. As reflected on many acts of kindness and charity over the past year, our nation draws inspiration for those who went to the call to help communities and our nation. With your continued efforts to build a nation's culture of service, America will proudly remain at length with freedom and opportunity for all. Thank you for your enduring commitment to the service of community, our nation. I trust that you continue your work as a veteran of others and even stronger for the future of America. Congratulations, John. Thank you, John.
Do you have any family on here? No.
So we give you opportunity here for one week. Take that off, sorry. Yeah, this is back here challenging, challenging for all of our staff, challenging our first responders, challenging our leaders. Throughout the entire pandemic, throughout the last few years. Want to take an opportunity to honor our. Do that because no matter what, you've always got a good idea. You're always going to delve down the work end of whatever needs to be done. You're willing to revamp. And, and you know, all of this reflects on the entire staff as well. Because that's kind of the motto of how we do things, small and smart. I said that every year, so I need more. Now, this was not supposed to be the actives. I'm sure Bob, did you receive them two months ago? Do you predict the future of both? And some of us are more responsible for you needing this than others. I mean, we're. This is an actual, one hundred percent professional and actual gear. It says under retired chief when you're. You can have this until we get a real fire department change. Watching your Facebook and your Instagram, it's going to be fun itself. But we need to have all sincerity, brother.
Yeah, you're not getting that. If you don't put it on your Instagram, I'll put it on mine. I think you need to put it on.
Oh wait, we start talking about the 500 blocks though.
Then things just come. Special thanks to host person. We're only ordering and finding all the information that achieved for assisting. Council, next up we have the time items and the materials that are consented in. Um, our consented agenda is to write this item approved. As long as we get consent or any full ownership. All right, seeing a, you know, interest in wanting to use our design. Uh, council looking for a motion to. Motion by councilperson Zach, first thing. Second, councilperson. Any comments? Begin voting with the councilperson.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Council, very keen on this.
Mayor for the record, that is going with the staff recommendation, especially if it goes to item four B. With the knowledge that beautiful like this is on the VRB and you're waiting there in front. And I think we were pointing that out as well. And the other items are A and R, so for the maintenance, that also we're taking transportation for town. And that is also the staff recommendation for all. Next up is, uh, in five days, our town council meeting minutes from February ninth, twenty twenty one. Information is approved, council. I should have given host person, uh, host person for the new sir. And in the conference room, questions, comments.
All right, moving with councilperson for tea. Bye. Bye. Bye.
Bye.
Next item is item sixty eight, and this is our town manager evaluation. We're sending this to councilperson.
Okay. Every year, since Mr. Schmidt has been hired, the council has been charged with providing a performance appraisal. For him, he divides his own appraisal, which is in the agenda, self appraisal. And then each of the council members and the mayor all enter in their story. This year, the same as last year, overall rating of a possible ten, Mr. Schmidt scored an eight point seven. Very few areas that could be improved or anything in conjunction with the fire. This last year was very difficult time. Uh, and Mr. Schmidt, but in many, many, many extra hours talking to residents, controlling Zoom meetings. It's just unimaginable amount of time that he put in. And he was able to accomplish all of this with very, very few problems. Uh, he coordinated where we should close areas because of the pandemic. Or they were local businesses, so they can continue operating. It was like he had sixteen bowling balls in the air at the same time and he managed to handle all of them. So, uh, for me personally, and based on comments of the council and mayor, thank you so for a job well done. One of the things also for the council is to recommend a pay increase. By contract, we're bound to provide at least a three percent increase every year, unless there is a financial situation where we cannot. This year, I'm making the recommendation that it be increased three point four percent by $4,720, which rounds him out from annual salary of $142,000 from his previous year of $137,280. I also am making the recommendation that we extend, Mr. Smith, not a fact, for an additional two years to expire on March thirty first, two thousand twenty six. That ensures that we complete the new facilities, get moved in and give an operation going before we get into the process of what the county manager shouldn't need to rush. Thing doesn't right now, but we're calling for him to leave. So that's my recommendation for the increase of three point four percent to an annual salary of $142,000. And to make amendment three to this contract extending it to March thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
Thank you, Councilperson McKinnon. Appreciate it. I'll be right back on this side of it. So I guess the first thing we need to do is I need a, a motion to approve evaluation first. Let's go ahead and do that at first. Six second, a motion from councilperson Mander. Second, council, any discussion? And we'll begin voting with councilperson McKinnon.
Bye.
Bye. Bye. Perfect. And I will, I'll look to town manager Smith. If you'd like to work with us for another two years, you can give me a thumbs up.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate everything that you've done, not only with providing me the staff that I need, but always approving requests that are needed. We, we have a lot of wants, but there's a lot of needs as well. Uh, and entrusting me with this town and its finances and also with the staff. I couldn't have asked for better staff. So I couldn't have done this without them. And I look forward to the next five years. So I really appreciate everything. I look forward, you know, to working with you again, Bob, in the future in some sort of area, like some of the committee and same thing with the council member under. I had a great experience working with both of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, management. Council, now I'll be looking for a motion to approve our town manager contract extension. This is right on the sixth key. Which is approved, which is approved, councilperson McKinnon? Second, councilperson Mander. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we will be voting with councilperson Mander. Bye. Bye. Bye.
Bye.
As always, on addition, thank you and thank you, councilperson McKinnon. Extra effort built upon. Congratulations. That brings us to the exciting part of the union, and that is our new business. I know. The original, sir.
No, I, I. We have an appointed new liaisons. And we'd like to give a quick report on two, two items. Number one is the elders luncheon that we've been holding every other month. There will be one next month on the thirteenth of April. Where this firm is going to do the same as we have before, have deals going out to the deal. So that has been a booming success and each time we've done it, the crowd has increased. Also, if you haven't had a chance to go by in Central Park, the dog and boy statues that were donated by John Legere have been installed. Anyway, it has been installed and it is a kid back. Every kid walking in that park has to go. So it is, it's very attractive and a great addition to the park. And that's my.
That's perfect. And certainly we want to echo Bob's stance to the neighbors. That's amazing. I really enjoyed looking at our profile when we. In the slide just. Councilperson Mander, do you have any, um, council, any reports from the council or residents?
You know, I don't have much except that tree board and weight committee both rescheduled the meetings this month. They're both occurring tomorrow and I no longer officially in office. So, um, and I happen to have conflict, so I'm not going to be attending those meetings. But those committees go to expect a new liaison. If any of you can attend, that might be interested in taking over the liaison relationship. Uh, the tree board is scheduled to meet at 10 a.m. on the back porch of town hall. It is absolutely a beautiful time to meet in that shaded area. So I recommend that you can just get nothing more, just to learn about what's going on with tree board. And then also the weight committee is scheduled for six p.m. tomorrow. That'll be a zoom call. Would that information be on the comms side?
And we will make liaisons once we have our new council seated. Did everybody's opinions, thoughts and recommendations by security? And then we can make some batch. Or make the best decisions, the right, you want the right places.
I see you super competitive. We're all, we're all senior Zen bar. So tree board. Tree board is Zen, and we're in them and we're in them back.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll go ahead and we will do a random couple of things as we address the new business here. Uh, we're going to swear in our new council members. It says we're going to swear in the mayor as well, but I think I'm here. Uh, and then we'll swear our new council members, councilman Bill Martin, councilmember Manon David. And we data. And then afterwards, you guys will be kind enough to have some special recognition for councilperson. you guys will be, uh, kind of, let's have some special recommendations for councilperson. Uh, Bob McInnes and councilperson. As I call your neighbors swearing in, you can see me, uh, me at the podium, and glad you, and remember, just come up and welcome to. First, please.
Go ahead and.
We've been by senior, and we've been, councilperson, and Bill Martin. Councilperson Martin, please repeat. Appreciate that. Councilperson, if you're ready, then. I, William Bill Martin.
I, William Bill Martin.
solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the town of Windermere.
Town of Windermere.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member. Yeah, now let's do them as we get, okay? That's where you sign. Get to sign. Okay. Yeah, did it help?
Not yet.
You're getting there. You're just not gonna get on either.
Maybe some Kevlar.
I don't know if we can afford the bubble wrap.
Any mic, you know? It's, sorry. Do I hear that? Sure. Mrs. David, if you'd like to come up and join us, and again, any family members or friends that you'd like to have come up this morning? It's not gonna take you, she don't automatically get on some band, so just come up. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I'll do the oath of office. I, Manny David. Solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And will obey the laws of the state of Florida. That I will in all respects. Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances. Of the town of Windermere. And will faithfully discharge the duties as council member. Congratulations. And last but not least, Mr. Andrew, any new community data? You bring your reinforcements?
I did not.
Absolutely. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me, sir. I, Anthony Stone, Dad.
I, Anthony Stone, Dad.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear.
Or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will obey, I will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Obey the laws of the state of Florida.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the town of Windermere.
Sure.
And the Charter and the, and we're, all right, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the council member.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of the council.
Mr. Charter, send out, give you a pocket copy.
So we're certainly honored to have three new council people join, um, in the leadership. One of the greatest things about this town, one of the first things that I noticed when I moved here is that so many people, so many of my neighbors in service over time, whether they were mayor or whether they were a councilor, everybody is pretty, even, you know, years later, I still find out a few new council that I didn't know about, so. Um, I think it's a real privilege that we're able to do that, and it's very important. Big reason why we are who we are, and why we have been able to, weather tough times, always flourish, always stay true to ourselves, give place that people want to come and want to go. Makes me more proud than anything else. Now we're in honor of two people that have given of their time in service over and over and over again through committees, meetings, uh, uh, you know, events, challenges, crises, you know, and lots of good times as well. Certainly appreciate, uh, councilperson, the standard, and, and I've got a. You have a chair. You can hang on your boot. You have to knock your own boot right into the, or something like that, I can see you. It's like, I would say six years, six years in this.
I'll give you one.
There you go. Bob, I'm gonna start with you, sir, six years of service. We're thick and thin, you've always represented everyone very, very well, you're a great listener, um, make sure, a good communicator. Knows what's going on, you're a key part of that, in fact, when I pull somebody you aren't running, like, I hate those. So you're gonna have to continue the, yeah, updated email list. Uh, but this is an award that's presented to Robert Bobbick in appreciation of six years of service as a town winner. As a town council member, March two thousand fifteen to March twenty.
Do you want to sit?
Not really. Anyway, uh, when I moved to Windermere, I used to come down and see what was going on and watch the mayor get washed out. You know, like, it was more exciting. Yeah, it was very exciting. Anyway, uh, and I decided to get involved. Uh, one of the main reasons was because out here, I only had three minutes to talk, and up there, I could talk as long as I wanted. So the mayor has kindly told me that I can have one last speech, so, we're good. Let's talk about Windermere. You've heard me over the years say that Windermere is unique, and it is, but what makes it unique? The dark roads, the quaint seven, we're surrounded by beautiful lakes, the residents, employees of the town. It all binds together to make Windermere unique, and it's a great place to live, it's a great place to serve. Uh, I don't know if you have any knowledge, but we have thirty seven town employees to keep this thing going, coupled with sixty six volunteers, and you heard from the chief earlier what the impact of these volunteers means to the town. It's a great contribution, and helps keep our taxes low, in most towns, these positions will be paid in one way or another. Oh, unlike all of you, allowing me to be a service to you these past six years. I'm very grateful, we trust, we support, and I hope that I met your expectations, and I'm honored to be able to serve. Thank you.
I don't have to reach this massive, we're almost there, so. Councilperson Andrew, would you please join me? Councilperson Andrew, this is, uh, an award presented to you by Elizabeth Littsander, in appreciation of two years of service as a town member, town council member, March twenty nineteen. And certainly we appreciate you, always quick to get involved, detail oriented, never leaves a gentleman in turn, probably work too hard, as you might talk about, we have these long calls on drive, you know? It is a, uh, it's been a privilege to serve with you, you've been a really great role model to me. Part of the reason I have such great council people now is because of people that you serve. You see that it can be done, and you see that you can do two years or your six year, you can. Everything that you've done, all your services are a talent of yours. So Bob has speech. I'm guessing you're gonna have a speech?
I have to.
Come on, now I want you to.
And actually, I, I don't have a prepared speech, usually I have prepared remarks. Um, I think a lot of you see me around town, I don't know, maybe five times in the morning, I cover our streets, and and just about every day since I made a decision not to seek reelection, I have thought about what I would say to everyone. Uh, it has been a great honor and gift that everyone in this town has given me to serve, and I can tell you that council member Williams and council member McInnes are two of the reasons that I, that I chose to seek reelection in the first place under their, um, guidance and their encouragement, and, and I appreciate so much, and all of you having a chance. This has been a board that has been tremendously respectful to one another, um, open and really demonstrative of, of great service. So I, I thank you all for, for allowing me to serve with you, um, to our town staff. Uh, you have impressed on me even more this past year, the virtues of flexibility and communication. Um, really make an effort all the time to, to reach out to our, to our neighbors, and, and I know that I hope all of them appreciate you as much as I do, um, and even more so this year. And our police department, um, I, it's, it's hard to even have words for your, your, your dedication and your commitment to serving with honor and integrity is, is truly commendable, and it is a model for all of us, and I appreciate it. Thank you to you, Bob, and for your leadership, um, and to our neighbors. I will still be here, and so those sixty six volunteers, I'll be among them, you cannot shake me. Um, Mayor Grune, when he heard that I was running for election, um, set a team, he won't leave that for five years, how is that possible? I didn't know if I should take that good or bad. For, for better or worse, I, I hope that I've been able to contribute to this town. I appreciate so much all that you have impressed on me about community, it's something that really hasn't been as defined to me throughout my entire life as it has come here of Windermere, it is unique, and I appreciate all of you, thank you.
So, all right, one is, if you wanted to be. If you have any, like, or. And thank you to, uh, councilperson. That's what it just looks like. Counsel, um, our next item on our new business agenda is, uh, the, and as a. Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee appointment of Cynthia Hunter. Parks and Recreation Committee recommended. From motion, from, motion to approve, motion to approve from councilperson Zapp, I'm moving for a second.
I'll second.
Second, councilperson Martin. Counsel, any discussion on this agenda item? We'll begin voting with, uh, councilperson Dadd.
Aye.
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 And just like that, we are off and running. Uh, next up, counsel, is other items for consideration, this is item G, and this is hiring of Public Works Director, uh, Tanya Elliott Moore. Staff recognition approval. Robert, did you want to present on this item?
Yeah, I can, um, Ms. Moore's been able to attend tonight, she had a conflict, but she would have been here tonight, uh, just to make sure she got everybody presenting herself. She will be at the next meeting, which is only, uh, two and a half weeks. Um, but we advertised this issue for about four months since Scott left. Um, we've interviewed five or six applicants, actually met the minimum. We've interviewed five to six applicants, actually met the minimum qualifications that we were looking for. Out of those six applicants that we actually did the interviews, Tanya was by far the top tier. And when you look at the evaluations, you typically see, you know, communication, communication, communication. I think with public works in the last probably fifteen years, there's been a lot of, a lot of lack of communication between staff and the public. And as you see with Tanya's resume, she's been a PIO, Communications Director. She has a public administration degree. She is now managing a bunch of community development districts. She's been a Public Works Director in Coe and Mayland. We contacted all of her references. They all said the same thing, that in the minute they would hire her back, the position was open, that they would take her in. She has worked under roads, she has worked on stormwater systems. She will be able to go ahead and create that stormwater maintenance master plan that we've always been looking forward to. Since she has the background, she has the experience. And again, she has the communication skills I think are necessary for a town like ours. So I would heartily recommend her approval. And this is per chart that we need the town council to be able to hire a director, which means chief, employer, finance director, and public works director.
You command, Mr.? Council, any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? When we were starting the meeting?
It'll be next Tuesday. And we have a already scheduled on Wednesday, just to your feet. But on Tuesday, on Wednesday, we're gonna be doing a drive-through of all the projects. And getting your, again, knowledgeable, the caller, the bestie, and some other products that we're working on right now, too. So she's gonna be around.
Council, any further comments or questions? Like the direction, I think that communication is a huge part. Everything that staff does, especially in this position, I think is gonna be win. So certainly, I'm heartily support that aspect. All right, council, seeing no further comments, looking for a motion to approve item I, Public Works.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Who is my motion here? Sorry. And second, councilperson Zapp. Any further questions, council? Seeing none, we begin voting.
Aye.
Aye.
You know, you have me into it.
Aye.
Zero. Both under our bill, you guys are getting the hang of it now. So that's our agenda for this evening. I want to move on to the oral and council liaison reports. I did want to touch briefly on a hot topic. Liaison. So what we did last year was put together a list of all the liaison assignments. All of the support functions for staff, as well as some alternate positions, chamber, metro planning, and people boards that you all sit on here. So we will do that again. And what I'm looking for is for you to give me your top three in order. So one, a two, and a three. And that way, I'll go through seniority status now. And I also put a little bit of my own flavor in where I think people can relate with it. Look for that as soon as you email it by next week. You'll be two weeks now, and we'll be able to sign it. And committee liaison. I know everybody is pretty excited about it, so.
All right. And then we will be including the liaison to make sure that there's no conflicts with anybody's schedules as well.
You know, it's always, it's a little difficult this time of year. Everybody knows that probably send a watch was second this week. At the time that we all reflect on the work that our first responders do, the risks they take on our behalf. One of the things that makes me most proud is the legacy that we've been able to build here. The foundation built through our police department to honor him. And to be an example of what I think police should be. Rather than what I was. Certainly, we remember rockets. Weekend, every week. That's all I have, council. Would you like to do a committee report? We can start with. Councilperson Williams?
He did not be responsible. I don't believe that.
Councilperson Zapp?
Flash meeting notes are needed to back the color of the media. First meeting to next month. We think we have this.
Yeah, we posted both the project timelines on our social media accounts to make sure everybody's aware. And then, once we get to that forty-five percent, again, we're gonna be making sure that we reach out to the community, reach out to those residents directly. We have to get there. But and also, from a long-range planning perspective, want to get there and put as well which direction we want to go as far as road widths, swales, tightening, so on and so forth.
All right, councilperson Marty? The DRB did not be this month, however, there is a Zoom workshop next week on Wednesday at sixteen AM. Robert, for the five hundred block downtown redevelopment. That's still going on.
Just like that.
So I encourage everyone to go into that if possible. That's a large project that's gonna impact your order of safety. A lot of questions, information about that. It's gonna be terrible, the Zoom call. That's it, Mary, thank you. Excellent, thank you, councilperson Marty. That is a Zoom call in New England. Here, we'll want to mention, we want to learn as much as we can about what are options there and the next steps and parts of that development here. I know that is something that's interesting, interesting to me. We talked a little bit about the possibility with, with councilor Ramos about, are you gonna record out on the options and opportunities we got for adjusting those, you know, kind of building our own ordinances that will work with the treaty where this is in the long-term stays or short-term stays? Or do you want to, you can do it during your report. I just wanted to make sure we ran it.
I'd say there are average ways to see what, if the legislation changes or is.
Makes sense.
And then we probably have a better idea at the next meeting.
That's mine.
But I will send out again, this is something to consider.
Excellent, thank you. And go ahead and do staff reports.
Again, thank you all for the comments and evaluation. Again, words can express so much. My family and I feel for what fits on Windermere. And we feel like we're part of a family, not just a career, not just a job. And hopefully, it's reflected in what I do each and every day and making sure that I make myself available to you. A few items, again, there's been a lot of movement in Washington DC, not only in Washington DC, but also the state. As you know, that we submitted five appropriation requests through the state. It went through the appropriations committees, three of which were for the north, central, and south phases for the public water systems. Then we applied appropriation for the multi-motor path phase one from north to Park Avenue. And then we did another appropriation request for the bridge through the state and DRT. In addition to that, we have worked with Congresswoman Deming's office with the same appropriations. We lumped all the three appropriations for the water systems in one. And then we did two individual ones for both the multi-motor path and the bridge. So those are just two options for funding. And in addition to the funding that we're trying to work with Healthy West Orange on having them financial trail system and the bridge. But again, we, we know some terms, try to figure out how to get these things paid. As you know, the American Rescue Plan was approved and adopted and signed into law. So the town is looking to receive again money from that rescue plan. The number that is projected to be given to the town at the end of the year is about one point four nine million dollars. And that's a substantial amount of money for the town. What we are unsure about is how exactly we can spend that money. Can we supplement revenues that we lost because of COVID last year? State revenue sharing and stuff like that. And when we look at the numbers and we have the mid-year report of April, the new council members, so I do April's, as in the year report, we go for where we are with expenses, where we are with revenues, so on and so forth. The absence sales tax, gas tax, instead of state revenue sharing, we're seeing a loss for this fiscal year. But in complete opposite of that, we're seeing increases in our franchise fees and our utility taxes. Those increases offset the decreases. So pretty much gonna be what we anticipated for our estate revenues. So I'm not sure we'll be able to tap into that money to use it for lost revenues, even if you are allowed to use it for lost revenues. Once the Treasury Department gets a fix on how we're going to administer the funds and what requirements you're gonna have to fill out with the funds. We'll get a payment of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the first payment. And then twelve months later, we'll get another sub fifty. And then you have to spend all that money by twenty twenty-four. And what you can't do is use that money to supplement your general revenues, so you can go ahead and lower your taxes. Now, that was a big debate topic up in Washington DC. But we will have, make sure that we can use it to either leverage for more grants and more monies when it comes to infrastructure projects. Because that's the one item that I think we're gonna be able to leverage it on. They say you can use it for water, sewer, and broadband. But what they didn't include was stormwater, you know, other infrastructure projects, roads, so on and so forth. So they're trying to get clarification now. The National League of Cities holds a conference on Friday, which I attended. And I'll send you a drop of videos of those as well, so you can get some money with the American Rescue Act and see how we can spend this money. But it's money that the town will spend in a wise manner. We'll have a workshop on how to spend that money, once we actually have a good feel of how we're going to be spending, or how we can spend that money. Again, if you haven't had the opportunity to send letters of support to our senators who are elected officials, please do so in support of our appropriations requests. Again, as I said, they were in the committee, some of them are in for three. That's a lot of money that's coming to the town that we can greatly use for the water system. And then we create some other monies to hopefully get some other utilities to the town as well.
It's a really great opportunity to work on some infrastructure. And as we see all these things pulled out, usually the virus comes after a little pause and a lot of human aid back and forth. So hopefully, that will all go our way. I think there's, I think there's some pretty interesting and exciting opportunities we'll be able to do.
Yeah.
Like I said, workshop that and come up with the best of the best.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out what's gonna be going on. The three billion dollar package that they're putting together for the infrastructure package and what's gonna be used for what may be available to municipalities. Because what you don't want to do is spend the money and also and also my other money that's available for those money that's here to spend. So we're trying to figure out by talking to our elected officials, so where this is going, what you use, what a match can be approved, either through their caucus or their conference and figure out how it's gonna go. I will keep an eye on it and make sure that whenever we do get the money, we spend it in a much more convenient way.
Exciting opportunity. Do our best to make it absolutely achievable. Absolutely, sir. Councilperson, in regards to the appropriation. The question, Congress, does it pay extended letters for, for prepaid? Excellent, very good. Thank you, councilperson Zapp.
Yeah, this whole amount of appropriations is sold for the dollars. For those in the audience that are just trying to figure out what we're talking about.
Time, another question. Do we have a, you know, a council?
Yes.
I'll make sure they add it. Our twenty twenty end of year report went out, I think about a week ago. I believe our one interest in bus access is on the case, so that I guess it went out today. So all the residents should get that, you know, a complete overview of the year twenty twenty. Everything, crime trends, what went on, what didn't went on, what didn't go on, and then also all the grants, money, whatever we get. City reform, citizen training, crisis and incident stress management training, we hope to that about last month. We are excited with our new facilities, so we finally give us some training sessions in our own place, Mark. Be really nice as opposed to a sort of down road. Training today and all day on the thirtieth, thirtieth, and next Tuesday for our new councilmembers. They were invited to, we have to participate in as many training sessions as you can. It's been my goal since day one. All our councilmembers and the mayors are always invited to our training. I think it helps us with any, when things happen in the future. That's everything from firearms training to population levels training. So I'll send that, did I send that out to you last night? So I'll get that out to you, I'll get some training next week if you want to send that. Remember, April third for all our residences, our research ring, it's listed on the town hall webpage. The route is on there, ten AM to twelve PM. It was pretty recent, that's last year. So I think we're gonna, we're probably gonna keep that around for some time. But the, oh, the off-duty program details started kickoff last week because of spring break. It was raining a little bit, so, but wasn't that rain needed? But that is in May, we have the correct officers to be there. DC attended, it was last week, or we can have our predation trend. So we are really, very diligently heading toward on that end. There are some significant events that we're gonna have to do, all of us as a town. Make sure we're able to speak for that, so that our goal is always met. When our town is trying to get into the city, we'll be applying for predation. And we'll be having an audit of that, it'll go a year at a time, and also we are getting. So there's a lot of particulars there that we're gonna get to. I mean, Windermere State Attorney's Office again last week, got some issues. We made an arrest a few months ago, two individuals with over a pound and a half of weed. It was packaged for sale on delivery. They also had two firearms on, and the case was once again just dismissed. So those of you in equivalent positions, I ask that you pay attention to those things. They're going on and in and around our community. April fourth, a member we quoted, Marcus Settle, he is retiring on April fourth after, I think, forty-four years of service to law enforcement, which is a long time. And I feel to that, when he retired, we actually are in the process of our next officer, who has about four years of experience coming from the city county sheriff's office. We've been very blessed and very fortunate in our agency. Every AEC and every chief that I know around are extremely shorthanded and not get personnel. And we've just been so fortunate to hire very qualified personnel over the last several years. We're happy about that. Okay, I got that, thank you. That's it, any questions, man? Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. We definitely, you know, the State Attorney's Office, I actually need to honor that. It is, it is a big deal. We're not looking to do little, little petty things, but some of these things are pretty exciting. I'm doing a phone call line, my phone is always on, so you can text me or call me. You have questions about that, we'll be back to those cases. I just had to quick update, I think all the three of our officers, and that COVID has fascinated some in DC, have already had multiple, or two vaccinations. So that couple weeks, aggressive, this week, that weekend, had twenty personnel, I'll look for them, didn't really get vaccinated, so we got up three to five percent of our injuries. Excellent. Travis?
We installed the old cat sign in our light house that went front of the PB and at an office. I can remind the basketball courts. I'm waiting on a third blow for the flat roof outside of town hall. Should be getting that, I think tomorrow or first day. Central park is done with the mulch, all, all outdated, statue, slab, everything looks great. We put up split rail fence, we have a parking issue down on Fourth Avenue. We put up some split rail fences, some signs. I'm waiting on some, no parking signs to come in, then we'll get that all installed. Boxing in the electrical panel down at Windermere Rex Center right now. Getting rid of the turnbikes from the lights, they've been a headache. So it's just gonna strictly be on the timer. Our normal, everyday stuff, roads, trash pickup, cleaning drains, fixing signs, that's about it.
Get everything you guys are doing, thanks very, very much. Mary, I see it's getting a little late.
Yeah, Mary, before John gets up here as well. I do want to thank Travis and all the guys. Travis has some big issues to fill in a lot of responsibility over the last four months. The manner in which he did, and, you know, the comments and compliments that he received for the public works from over the last four months has been significant. Took on a lot of responsibility, and you didn't hesitate. And I think a lot of the town residents do recognize. And I think a lot of the town residents do recognize that, recognize your importance for the town. And from every little project completed from the time that Scott left until now, it's just been just amazing. So I just want to thank you for serving that role, that position until Tanya takes over on next Tuesday. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I told Robert to be quick. I just wanted to say that it's been an honor and blessing to work with these guys over the last four months. And just watching Travis grow and just take over responsibility and just allowing the guys to take that initial, I'm going to get it done kind of attitude. And so it's been really kind of enjoyable the last four months for me, both as a resident, as a town engineer, but also as a volunteer at this town and just to watch Travis's growth. And we got a lot accomplished in the last four months. We empower the people that run the work that they do every day. And so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say it's been a blessing for me, for Robert, to ask me to sit in as a junior Public Works Director, which is not in my, not in my resume or not anything that I would ever want to do, but I was glad they did. And it just was very awesome last four months. Just watching both of the guys getting a lot of conversation. I appreciate that you guys trusting in me and Robert trusting me to be able to take over in there. So thank you.
Thank you both for everything. And I know that it'll take us to a, I think it's to a different length. And I think it'll leave the further opportunities coming. Excellent. Thank you. Dorothy, anything for the good of the order?
I just want to thank the council, the board and obviously the election. We had a really great time.
And I have to remind you, I was winning for the, I think you guys have received it. So I want to thank them all. Yeah, it's brought up.
I'm glad. You know, it's not fun. Tanya.
It was a really, the election is, you know, always great to see residents, volunteers, make sure that we have every privilege of voting, every. And yours as well. Anything else for the good of the order, council staff?
I was sorry. We will make sure that the council members get up to date on sunshine laws, barber's rules of order, so on and so forth. So we'll get that information soon shortly.
Sounds good. And you know, the whole council work together to make sure that it's transitioned and maybe just get it fast. And we're looking forward to the, and again, some communications to councilmember Andrew and. Thank you guys.